Our next item on the agenda is any changes to the order of the agenda. Do we have anything from staff recommended?
We have.
No changes, and council?
No, Mr. Mayor.
No changes. Okay. Mr. City Attorney, anything to report from closed session?
Apparently, nothing to report.
Okay, thank you. And next item then is council communications and announcements.
I have nothing formally, although we just completed the last and greatest Lorton Wine Fair. And I didn't make it on Sunday, but I was there on Saturday, and it was -- the weather couldn't have been better, and the crowd was good, and I'm sure that it was a very good event when all was said and done. So, on behalf of the city again, and representing the city, we want to thank the chamber for all the good work they do in putting this event on.
And Tom, do you know how it is that we've been doing this for 16 years? I don't think we've had a rainy Saturday or Sunday since we put this thing on.
I recall a little threatening weather from time to time, and we have had some fairly cool winds, but basically, it's always gone over.
It's nice.
And we've never had it cancel out.
So, the Blue Angels should thank us.
That's right.
Yeah. Brad?
Yes, I just wanted to report I had a meeting with the President, April Carlson, of the Carlson Educational Foundation, and one of the board members, Seth Rosenblatt, just to talk about how we might -- council might recall that we've established a liaison with the Ed Foundation, so I had a chance to meet them and discuss how we might get together. Their board meeting's at the fourth Monday of every month, so obviously, that's a little bit of a conflict with ours, but they've agreed that they'll move one back probably next month, and I'll have a chance to join, so I'm looking forward to that. It's a great organization. I got a nice overview from April and Seth, and I have a pamphlet here I can pass around so that you can take a look at it. But it's an impressive organization, impressive support for our schools, and I'm looking forward to the relationship on behalf of council. Also, the Ed Foundation, Holly Maderman, I think contacted both Mayor Grocott and myself about the city potentially endorsing or sponsoring California Worst to First Seminar, co-sponsor, I should say, along with some other -- the Ed Foundation, other organizations in the city to put on this night, a seminar night for California education. I think it's a neat idea. She gave some information to us that we'll have copied and given to council, and maybe we can agendize it for the future to consider co-sponsoring.
Very good. We will do that.
And that's it.
That's it. Okay. I have a couple of things. The first one is just a reminder to council members that we did get a mandatory emergency preparedness training for staff and council. Each of us should have received this in our packets, and that is due back. We need to complete that test and turn it into the staff, to the police chief, before October 31, 2006. So, please do take care of that. It's mandatory for us to get funding.
I have finished that, by the way.
You read that?
It's no simple deal.
No.
You want to dedicate a few hours to that.
Okay. No extra pay, though, right?
No extra pay.
No.
It'd be pretty easy to fail it, actually, unless you're really paying attention.
Okay.
That'd be a warning to you.
Yes. I wanted to announce that I did attend a Eagle Scout Court of Honor for one of our residents, Spencer Albrecht, and if you go to Central Middle School, there is a mural on the wall of the school building that he did. It's a picture of it on the invitation. It's a picture of a -- depicts a flag, a U.S. flag, furling in the wind, and the bust of an eagle. And that's a very nice mural that he led a team in putting together and seeing that done. Also wanted to let folks know that we have a new employee who especially the public might have interaction with is Lori Bell is in the city clerk's office. So, if you visit the city clerk and need help on anything, you might meet Lori Bell. And then, I also wanted to announce I've been talking to the chief of police about putting together a care package for Michelle Frey. If you remember, she's the gal we gave a special proclamation to. She's in the Navy and is serving our country in the Iraqi Theater, and so we're going to look at putting together a special care package for her and her mates and try to get it there around the holiday time sometime in December. So, the chief and I are working on that, and if you're interested, look for further details. That'll be on the city's website. I think that covers all the things that I wanted to cover. Yes, it does. Thank you. So, that would take us to reports to council from staff.
There are three reports in the agenda packet. The first one dealing with the quarterly report of the Flooding Land Use and Creeks Ad Hoc Committee, the second being the strategic plan update, and the third being the update on the two-plus-two city-school district meeting. And Brian is prepared to give a staff report on the quarterly update for the Flooding Land Use and Creeks Committee.
Okay, Mayor, members of council. I'll give you a brief overview of the Flooding and Land Use Group, and then the chair of the group is here as well to have some additional comments. Council will recall that in the summer, you appointed the Flooding and Land Use Committee to a one-year assignment to run from July 2006 to June 2007. You gave them a charge of four areas: creek setbacks, flooding, interagency efforts towards creek regulation, and sedimentation, and also, you asked that they come back on a quarterly basis. So, in the overhead and also in the staff report, there is a copy of your original charge to this group. In terms of the progress for the first quarter, the months of July through September, which we've now completed, the group has done several things. They had their Brown Act briefing with the city attorney. They elected their officers. They have decided that the second of the four items that you gave them, flooding, would be the first focus area that they are going to endeavor to work on. They had a presentation on creek and flood issues and master planning by the Public Works Director. They did a tour of selected portions of creeks throughout the community, and they've also begun a review of the creek section of the Natural Resources Report. In terms of where the group is planning to go in their second quarter, which would be the months of October through December, they did have a presentation by the planning director last week after this report was presented or prepared, excuse me, and they've also begun a project to develop the priorities in the creek section of the Natural Resources Report that we mentioned earlier, and that's actually, I believe, coming back to their meeting in November for final work. And then also, they are -- have expressed an interest in offering some input to the Drainage Master Plan RFP that's being prepared by the Public Works Director, and it's my understanding in talking to Public Works Director that within the next couple of weeks, that'll be available for the Ad Hoc Committee to look at. So, those are some of the highlights of their work to date. And with that, let me turn over to Len Maderman, who's the chairman of the Ad Hoc Committee, to offer additional comments.
Thank you, Brian.
Good evening, council members, and thank you, Brian. Six months ago -- I'll read from prepared remarks, a couple of minutes. Six months ago, as Brian mentioned, you decided to appoint a group of San Carlos residents to study the issues of flooding, creekside setbacks, sedimentation, and our city's relationship with neighboring cities in the county and state and federal jurisdictions. You asked us to recommend approaches that include the best available information and that include the broad perspectives of local residents. This committee of citizens is known as Flooding Land Use and Creeks, and as you -- and you requested quarterly reports from us. Us includes eight dedicated residents of San Carlos, many of whom live along our creeks, three of whom are here today, myself, Walid Najja is our vice chair, and Dick Edmunds is our committee secretary. And Walid, do you want to stand up, and Dick, do you want to stand up? That's Walid Najja, and Dick Edmunds. Dick, do you want to stand up? And so, today's our first quarterly report. In late July, we held our first meeting. Since then, as Brian mentioned, we had three other meetings, and we appreciate very much the assistance of Brian, Maura, and as Brian mentioned, we met with the Public Works Director and the planning director. Here's a quick summary. Let's see. First, I'll talk about flooding. As you recall, our first meeting was a few days after you approved the remedy, a hoped-for remedy, on the South Laurel Street flooding issues, and thus, our focus is not so much on what the remedy is, but to try to ensure that we don't face that as a city again. And when I say face that, I mean try to ensure that taxpayers don't get stuck with addressing a privately caused flooding problem. To help ensure that, we're looking at how our city's planning process will include flooding concerns, and in that vein, I'm going to hand our planning director some documents on the federal requirements and regulations regarding flooding in the planning process. I'll send it also by email. I'll send it also by email. And then furthermore, earlier this year, you discussed the topic below -- the topic of below-grade parking in a new building that's going up on -- between Laurel and El Camino on Morse, and at the time, the Public Works Director talked about how he would discuss the issue with project engineers. I'm not sure of the results of those discussions, but I will give him copies of the federal regulations on construction of below-grade parking in a flooding zone, because they're very specific, and as a city that is participating in the National Flood Insurance Program, it's incumbent upon us to take those into account. Finally, on the topic of flooding, so I'll give those to Director McTary. Finally, on the topic of flooding, the committee discussed with the Public Works Director, as Brian mentioned, the drainage master plan, and we look forward to commenting on the draft RFP. And when the firm is selected, we look forward to working with the firm on their development of the master plan. The next of our four areas of concern that we want to take a look at is interagency relations. We've discussed watershed issues with the county supervisor, who is developing the new San Mateo County Creek Ordinance with a Belmont City Council member who's active on this issue, on these issues, and we plan to talk soon with representatives of Redwood City, State Fish and Game, and Federal Emergency Management Agency. Because of the time it takes to build these relationships and communications, this is an ongoing topic for the committee, not one we'll simply pick up and finish, and this is something we anticipate to work on during all of our 12 months. The topic of creek setbacks for property owners is a third topic. It's, as I'm sure you know, a difficult one, as the city must provide some level of predictability for landowners when they contemplate and propose projects, while at the same time, I believe there should be some level of flexibility depending on the on-the-ground reality of the landscape at the project site. I know of many residents who are -- who find our creek ordinance a bit unclear. The last one -- last time one was written was 1987, and fortunately, we visited with Planning Director Liz Cullen and talked about that just last week, and it's our intention to help to develop a new ordinance, because the time is right. And it's also a good timing, because as I mentioned, San Mateo County is putting together a new ordinance that they anticipate will go out to public review within the next six weeks or so. And the timing is right, because the Drainage Master Plan is happening, and I believe that we could include a detailed study of the creeks to help inform an ordinance as part of the Drainage Master Plan, and we talked with the planning director and the Public Works Director about that idea, and we'll get back to you about that. Finally, the timing is right in regards to the general plan. The general plan is ripe for amendments early next year, we're told, and we look forward to participating in that discussion in a significant way. The final topic of sedimentation is one we intend to take up later. And finally, as Brian mentioned, in advance of your study session on the Natural Resources Task Force, we intend to recommend to you a few actions that we believe the council should focus on initially. As you know, there are -- I can't remember the number, but I think it's about 60 recommendations of the task force, and we just want to provide our insights to help you look through those recommendations perhaps in a more expeditious way. So, thank you, and at this -- oh, finally, I just wanted to say for the public, we encourage participation, and we welcome members of the public to come to our group meetings. Our next meeting is November 15 at 7:00 here in City Hall, and thank you, and at this time, if you have any questions for myself or Walid or Dick.
Thank you. Any questions?
Not really, Len. I just want to compliment you on the work, good work the group is doing, and look forward to your continued process, and I would hope that as, you know, as time goes on, we'll be able to get into the general plan issues in the other format, planning issues you mentioned. I think they're very important.
Only one question I had, and I just wanted to make it's more of a clarification. As far as the Natural Resources Task Force, you will be looking at all the recommendations or just those that relate to creek issues?
Oh, I'm sorry. You're right. We're looking at the ones that are relative to creek issues.
Okay.
And when I said approximately 60, that's just the ones related to creek issues.
Yeah, because there's like, yeah, over 100, I know. Yeah. Okay. Thank you very much.
Thanks.
Very good. Pat, is this the item that you wanted to speak on? No? Okay. That then brings us to the strategic plan update. This is item 5B on the agenda.
Good evening, Mayor Grocott, members of the city council. This will be a brief update, your monthly update on the city's six-month strategic plan. By way of background, on August 14, the city council held a retreat with the city manager and department heads to review the previous six-month strategic plan, goals, and objectives, and develop new goals and objectives for the coming six months. On August 28, the council formally adopted that plan, and on September 11, amended it for the first time to include two new objectives. One, under-improve infrastructure goal, that is to have a report on the conceptual pedestrian safety plan. The second objective that was added in September was improve for the improved communication and customer service goal, to include a study session on community building. To date, we've completed two of the objectives in the strategic plan, one relating to fire education, related to the fire assessment, and the other related to feasibility study for fields. And as well, today, we activated the city's Intranet for employees, completing another objective, and tonight, obviously, we've got a study session on building community, which is one of the objectives added. I'd be happy to answer any questions. That's where we're at so far.
Thank you very much. Any questions? I have just one, and it's more of a general question. We started this process when Mr. Weiss came onboard, and it's a new process for the city, and so I'm curious how this is trickling down through the employees and any feedback from the employees on the positives or negatives of this means of doing business, if you will.
Do you want me to take it? We have had feedback. One of the components of the strategic plan is for all the department heads and directors to take the report back and meet with all their employees so that it is disseminated throughout all the levels of the organization. I myself have had positive feedback that it's nice to have a structure and know, you know, what the agenda is of the city council that staff is to be working on. The city manager, Mark Weiss, also held a recent meeting last week, in fact, with inviting all city employees, discussed the components of the strategic plan, and invited feedback related to that and other items and other objectives of the strategic plan.
So, any constructive criticism that we might hear later regarding this, or?
I haven't heard any criticism.
I really haven't heard any criticism either. We actually have encouraged, though, the employees to become aware of this. As Jeff indicated, we've distributed it throughout the organization, both now at the departmental staff meetings and filtering it down through the chain of command like that, also with an all-hands meeting with all of the employees, and we've directly encouraged all of them to be aware of the process so that they can plug into it. And as we prepare for the next session with the city council to formulate the work plan moving forward, we're encouraging the employees to work within their departments to think of ideas that they can relate to the department directors that are sitting in those meetings so that everybody's ideas can at least be heard. So, that is something we're encouraging the employees to do. We're hoping that they'll take us up on the offer.
And then, in similar fashion, our commissions that -- traffic commission, planning commission, et cetera?
We've distributed the goals and objectives to the commissions as well.
Okay. Very good. Thank you very much. That brings us to then item 5C, which is an update on two-plus-two city-school district meeting. We're prepared up here to have a few comments, but do we have someone from staff? Okay. Very good. Thank you.
As you know, we've had the two-plus-two process since the mid-1990s, initially starting as a staff effort to work with the schools in the areas of park and recreation, enhanced summer school, technology, and traffic circulation, and then that was followed a couple of months later by a program where the two school board members and two council members meet on a periodic basis, several times a year, to talk about issues of mutual interest. In the current configuration, Mayor Grocott and Councilmember Lewis are the city representatives. Board President Quiggle and Board Secretary Hunkapiller are the school board representatives, and then at the city level, we have several staff members, the city manager, assistant manager, park and rec director, and public works director, and at the school board level, we have the school superintendent and the business manager staffing it. There were three items of interest on the October meeting, and in discussing that meeting with city manager, he indicated it might be appropriate to give you a report to council. So, let me kind of run through those three major areas. The first was a discussion of the athletic playing field possibility at the various schools, in particular, the city use and scheduling of those school fields. As you know, we currently have an agreement for one of those three sites, namely at Heather Elementary School. That agreement allows the city to maintain that field in exchange for scheduling and use, and I believe that agreement has one or two more years to run, if I remember correctly. And the discussion point there was, as has been discussed in recent weeks, there is a need to upgrade that particular field. At the Terre Linda Middle School, both through the field committee process, park and rec commission, and ultimately, at the council level, there has been some city interest in perhaps establishing a comparable agreement to the Heather site, to this site, to upgrading that field, which is currently used by the girls' softball league. And then finally, at the Central Middle School, the council had indicated an interest potentially of putting in some form of field there, and again, having an agreement. The key points in the field discussion at the two-plus-two meeting, and again, I'd emphasize this was among the committee members, this obviously hasn't gone to either our full council or the full school board, is that the school folks felt that as we talk about putting fields in at school sites, that the school site land needs to remain in school ownership. However, they did indicate that they would be willing to entertain a long-term lease at other sites beyond the long-term lease we have today at Heather, and that would be in exchange for upgrading scheduling and use by the city and its leagues. Also, the school district indicated that they would be willing down the road to potentially explore contributing funding to upgrading these fields over time. They don't have funding at this point, but they may in future years. As far as the three sites that the city has indicated interest in, all three are under construction at this time, with the Terre Linda site being the one that is earliest in that process, so it'll come out of construction roughly a year from now. The other two will come out of construction earlier than that. They indicated, school folks did, that in any agreement, in their opinion, the schools, of course, would get first use of access to the fields after the school day was over, and they indicated that typically, that would be at 3:00 PM for the elementary school at Heather, and at 5:00 PM for Terre Linda and the Central Middle School, unless something else was negotiated. They also indicated that the school board would intend to have a discussion of the athletic field usage at those three sites at one of their school board meetings later this year. Turning to traffic circulation. Traffic circulation at the school sites has been an ongoing two-plus-two agenda item, I think, almost as long as the two-plus-two group has been around. In the last year, the focus has been on the traffic congestion at the Terre Linda-Carmont Charter Learning Center intersection on the border of San Carlos and Belmont. The key points that we talked about during the meeting was that traffic continues to remain a concern at this intersection, and that the earlier proposal for a so-called loop road around the Terre Linda Charter School site is no longer practical due to the recent addition of on-street parking spaces that were done in the city of Belmont. At the end of this discussion, the group did focus on two options that we have to explore to help the traffic in that area. The first is a concept that the Public Works Department has been exploring about adding a turn lane at the Terre Linda Charter School site. This would be a one-time capital project of roughly $250,000, and I use that term roughly because the Public Works is still in the early stages of studying what that would involve and what it would cost. And then the other scenario is that we might explore some form of shuttle service to this intersection and to the Caltrain station, which would cost something on the order of $200,000 per year. Again, another rough estimate. And the action item on this particular area was that the city and school district will explore both of these options moving forward. Finally, we had a discussion about cable TV channels and the fiber network that was in the recent cable TV agreements the city has with Comcast and RCN. Turning first to the cable channels, as you know, we have four channels in both of those agreements. One is used for this channel, the city channel, and another is used for Peninsula Television. However, we are entitled to two more. The long-term vision, both in San Carlos and countywide, was that we'd use one of those channels for countywide educational channel run by the county office of education, and the fourth channel would be run by the elementary school district. Because the law is changing at the end of the year, staff's recommendation is that at administrative level, that we trigger the third and fourth channels, and in our discussion with the schools, there was agreement that there was interest there, and that also, the concept would be that we would initially trigger the countywide school district channel first, since the office of education apparently is further along in their planning in this area than our district is. And then finally, on the fiber network, again, as part of the franchise we have with Comcast, starting early in 2007, Comcast will wire all the city, school, and library buildings in San Carlos with high-speed fiber network, which will not only be capable of moving video from site to site and used on these four networks we talked about earlier, the four channels, excuse me, but also, we have the ability through adding additional features or cards to put voice and data and other features on there. And the school officials, both at the staff and elected level, have expressed interest in doing that. However, that would be on their dime, as it were, and similarly, the city is also exploring what else we could do with that network beyond moving video around. So, those are the highlights, and with that, I would turn to council members Grocott and Lewis to add any comments they might have, and certainly, I'd be happy to answer any questions you may have from me.
Thank you, Brian. Brad?
The only couple of things I might add is, as an action item, what we talked to the school board members about was to go back to the general school board and to give us their feedback on how they felt about the three fields that we had identified, Heather, TL, and Central Middle School. And I would say the general discussion, again, it wasn't, hadn't been discussed with the school board amongst all their members yet, but seemed favorable toward the Heather option. They all seemed to nod on that one, have less complications that came up in discussion, at least. Of course, with no lights was sort of the way I would give kind of the gist of the conversation as far as that went. Also, as far as the shuttle, I had asked the question was, when school was running up to the school, did it make an impact on the traffic congestion around the school? And they all said it had made an impact. Also, I think one of the school board members mentioned that, you know, in their conversations, that the notion of user fee, that people interested in shuttle service and may be interested in the user, paying the user fee, was something that they thought would be largely a good idea or acceptable or something like that. Again, these are sort of discussions that we're having in general about different impressions, and so that was one of the takeaway items was, I just wanted to clarify that. In talking about shuttle, was sort of with the idea of it also being partially, at least, user fee-based, or which would be a little bit different than what we had before. So, there's just a couple of clarifications that I might give to that.
And the only thing that I would add And the only thing that I would add is, when we did talk about the field at Heather in terms of artificial turf, to repeat what Brad said, it was agreed that no one wants to see lights there. The problem that the school board had previously with the recommendation of, there was some kind of idea of having a easement for lights, to disallow lights. And the problem they have with that is security issues. So they would not want something like that to sweep across the whole campus as a policy. But if it were focused on the field, I think there would be more open discussion on that. And then lastly, just to react to an article I saw in the newspaper about the shuttle program, and this was in the Daily Journal, and it almost left the impression that we're ready to launch into that tomorrow, which we are not. As Brad said, these are discussions that are going on, mind you, just with two council members, two board members, so we can't take any action on anything. We're just getting ideas from each other and then taking those back to our boards is the concept. So suffice to say, the idea of a shuttle is pretty far down the road, and it's just something that's being talked about in very preliminary fashion. So being that Brad and I were there, I think the only person that might have comment or questions is Vice Mayor Davids.
So, excuse me, the question I would have goes back to the fields again. Is the next step ours in terms of making a specific request of the district, or are they doing any evaluation that may have a time factor that we need to plug in?
My impression is what we've asked is to come back to us with what their priority would be based on those three school fields.
Okay.
So that's sort of, I think, the action item they're taking back to their board in that respect.
And to answer that further, I do think, and this, some of this was based on talking to Tom Quigle afterwards, they, of course, appreciate being able to comment, as they should, and having input, but they look at the fields, especially when, you know, for athletic use, as being a council issue that we need to decide. But they, again, they appreciate us going to them right now, getting their input. And we need to, you know, they've got building programs and so forth, as Brad mentioned, that are going on, that we need to be sensitive to and consider in our thinking.
And as far as our part of this concerned, we've authorized a feasibility study to look at the various sites and to return to us with a report. And I guess we're, we do nothing until we get that report. Is that where that part stands?
Barry, do you want to answer that?
Well, actually, we have money in the budget for feasibility studies, but we have not embarked upon those studies because of prior council action on the matter. So at this juncture, we would be awaiting results from the school district as to what their priorities were, or what the feedback they might give us on the alternatives for the fields, and also the long-term leasing, funding options and the like. We would report that back to the city council, at which point, we would then, the ball would then be back in our court in terms of whatever evaluations on whichever sites you might determine might be appropriate.
I'm a little confused, and I thought we authorized an RFP or an RFQ for a feasibility study.
We considered it for Highlands, to convert it from a soil-based, or from a sand-based to a soil-based field. But I don't believe, if my recollection is correct, that we authorized that study. We considered it that evening, we brought it forward to the city council, but no action was taken because the determination made by the council at that meeting was that the extra play that would be anticipated from the conversion to that type of a field would not justify the anticipated expense.
That's correct. I recall that action. But I also, I thought I recalled another action that authorized the release of funds for an overall study.
I actually have that right here, Tom. It's in our, because it's in the minutes that we approve, or we haven't gotten to that yet, but it's in the minutes, it's in our packet here, and I'm reading that. I thought the same thing, and I think the confusion came from, I made a motion that we approved issuing an RFQ for Terre Linda and work with the school district on the other fields. And then a, another action, or another motion was, and that was a motion that I made, it was seconded, but then another motion was also put on the table by councilmembers Versili and Lewis, moved to begin discussions with the St. Carlos School District regarding improvements to athletic fields at Terre Linda, Heather School Field, Central Middle School, and to not issue an RFQ at this time. And then that motion got a second, there was discussion, we voted on it, and once voting on that, it took away the motion that I--
Okay. I don't know.
I'm uncorrected. My recollection was that we were hoping to go back from the two plus two with some idea of what the disposition was toward fields. And I think we have an idea of what the disposition is, so I'd like to see us agendize at our next meeting, if possible, to put on for discussion which feasibility study should we proceed with, so we can get that ball rolling. Just in the discussions where both TL and Heather, they said that, you know, the fields are there, they're, they've got, they've left room in their plans at TL for a field, although that's farther out for them. At Heather, they said it's there, and their disposition is favorable, although we don't have a formal board action. They're looking for us ultimately for action to move forward, and the fields are failing as we speak. So I'd like to see us not wait, because we can't, we're not going to get back to the two plus two until first week of December, is that what we said?
Well-- December 5th.
December 5th. So mildly--
Do you mean from the school board, from the school board, their discussion and any action on a, what they would come up with is also a priority list?
They'd come up with a priority list.
Tom Quigle said that the earliest he could see them getting to that would be January.
Right. So given where we are, and given what we, the amount of time it's going to take to get things done, and given the state of Heatherfield, given the state of, I have to referee it on Highlands Field this weekend, but at any rate, we have two fields that are at school sites that I think there's a disposition that one or either is probably going to be in the running here. I'd like to see us agendize a discussion to move forward.
I would appreciate that, because I think that is our ball, and we ought to carry it forward. And the school district, you know, in their own timeline, may take longer than sooner to deliver back to us. And I think if we get our feasibility study going for those school sites, at least we've done our work, and we can move forward, perhaps make a specific request. As I see the feasibility report, it basically will tell us what, you know, what the turf or artificial components mean in terms of additional play and so forth, and what the complications might be, and all those facts that everyone wants to know and needs to get into before we make a decision.
Which bottom line is just simply more information for us to consider?
Yeah. Well, you know, it came out to Fields Committee during the time that we met, but it's basically in that committee report or in that committee file, and it needs to get out into a broader point of evaluation, I believe.
It's a, I understand it's a necessary official first step to moving toward getting something done. And not only do we have a couple of fields that are failing, we got two more that are hot on their heels in the next two or three years. And given the fact that it'd be difficult to hit next spring, given our current schedule, where, this is seasonal work, and again, this is just my opinion, it looks like we could even miss next spring to get, next season to get a field in. So I just think we need to keep, we need to keep pressing forward and help take care of the problem.
I would just simply add, as I was telling Tom this after our closed session, we had a little extra time, I went out and looked at every field today, including school sites and our own. And I would say of our own fields, quite frankly, the two to me that seem like they are in the most trouble are Crestview, especially at the west end of it. It's a, I don't know how they play there, quite frankly, without having injury in front of the goalie box. It's very wet, and it's almost like a quicksand situation. So at least that end of the field seems like it's failing. And the other is one that wasn't given really too much attention in the report, and that's the upper field at Highlands, is stadium, is just in real bad shape, in my opinion.
Yeah, it's, I got to say, we've got our work cut out for us, you know, and the city's been real good over the years of setting aside money to improve the fields. You know, we've done Loreola, we did Burton Park, we've done Arguello. We need to do our work, not just depend on any one measure to take care of the problem. We've got two, three, or four fields that are all going to have to be renovated and taken care of or replaced over the next several years, and we need to get on a plan, get the money set aside, and get the plan out there, and let's get moving. So let's, let's pull the agenda and see what we can move forward on.
One word of caution, I suppose, and it was discussed at the two plus two meeting, and I didn't see it mentioned too much in Brian's report or anything we've said so far, and that is, we did talk about at the two plus two, the need to have council, being legal council from both parties, start talking and looking at what it would mean to have a long-term agreement for a project.
Right, and there's two issues there in that discussion, obviously. One is, as the agreement pertains to using Measure G funds, and the second one is just a long-term lease that can tell the city, staff, and council what, you know, what's the term of lease we have if we're going to put a major capital improvement in at a school site, as far as spending that kind of city money on those properties. So Mayor Grocott's right, we said, you know, those discussions, if you guys can begin to talk forthwith, that would be great, so we know what we're up against.
And we have someone who would like to speak to us on this, Pat Bell.
Now that the subject of shuttle has come up again, I realize you're not ready to start driving tomorrow, I'd like to remind everyone that Scoot also served people who don't have the ability to get out there and cause traffic jams. And so now that the school kids and their parents have brought the issue to the fore once more, I'd like to see that any discussions about a city shuttle take into account the needs of people who can't drive and who really need that service to get around town, and who relied on it and used it. Thanks.
So that brings us to the end of Item 5C, I believe, and takes us then to public comment. Excuse me. Item six. I stepped ahead there. Item six, which is council appointments and presentations, and we have tonight consideration of appointment of representative to the Samatello County Mosquito Abatement District.
Through the chair, I just want to note that it said at the request of Councilmember Tiga Doherty--
Who is not here.
Is there particular interest in that subject, which would--
Not that I'm aware of.
Okay. Just thought I'd ask the question. I don't know, to be honest with you.
Yeah, the city manager asked me to present this tonight, since I wrote the staff report.
Oh, very good.
So if you want to go ahead without Inga, I don't know what her interest is in, was it particularly, but--
I think just her awareness about the law change and the possibility that we could put a council member on there, I think she wanted us to have a discussion on whether or not we wished to have a council member serve in this position, or continue to have a citizen. We have the option.
Uh huh, okay.
So is there any discussion on that?
I would just say the citizenry has served us well for many, many years, and I have no compelling urge to be a member personally. So I can readily recommend that Betsy be reappointed, unless there's some other--
I think Tom and I have the same mosquito issue, which is, we've got a little bit more exposure than others. Let's see that abated.
And Christine, you have talked to Ms. Schneider, and she's interested in carrying on.
Absolutely. She's very interested in this appointment. She hopes to continue in this appointment and actually enjoys it, so.
Okay. Well, I'm with Tom. Mr. Davids, that we have someone that wants to do it, we should probably appoint. So do we need a motion on that, a second and a vote? Okay.
I would move that we reappoint Betsy Snyder to the Samatello County Mosquito Abatement District for another two-year term, expiring December 2008.
Second.
Okay. Vice Mayor Davids made the motion, a second by Councilmember Lewis. Roll call.
Councilmember Davis?
Yes.
Councilmember Lewis?
Yes.
Mayor Grocott?
Yes. And now we come to public comment. So if anybody would like to speak to us on an item not on the agenda, they can do so at this time. You're limited to two minutes and 10 minutes total for all the public on this item. And we have a speaker card from Richard Crone, who would like to talk to us about fields.
Mayor Grocott, council members, tonight, the issue of requests for qualifications comes up once again. I think what we're looking for is really adherence to what was approved several months ago, and working closely with the school districts in prioritizing and defining what needs to be done, and not moving to a request for qualifications and wasting precious funds, but going straight to a request for proposal and getting actual bids on what needs to be done to improve the fields based on the plan and the agreement and collaboration between the school district and the city. Thank you.
Thank you. And I have no other speaker cards for public comment, so we will move on to approval of the consent calendar, and these items will be approved by one motion unless any one from staff, the public, or the council would like to pull an item for separate consideration. And having said that, I was going to pull Item D. Staff, any, anything? No? Counsel?
Nope.
Okay, and nothing from the public, I don't see, so--
I move we approve Items 8A, B, C, D--
D I pulled.
Excuse me, D's pulled. A, B, C, E, F. Do I have to read that?
Uh huh.
Yes.
Ordinance number 1378, modifying the Sam Carlos Municipal Code Section 2.24.060 dash, length of service regarding commission and senior advisory board, and Item 8G for approval. I'll second.
Okay, the motion was by Councilmember Lewis, second by Vice Mayor Davids. Roll call.
Councilmember Lewis?
Yes.
Councilmember Davids?
Yes.
Mayor Grocott?
Yes. And Item 8D then will move to be 10B under new business. Thank you. That brings us to, I believe, our study session, Item 9 on the agenda, review of Building Community Task Force report. And we've allotted about an hour for this, and I see our Parks and Rec Director, Barry Weiss, coming forward to give us a staff report.
Excuse me, one second while I get the high-tech stuff going.
Okay.
Mr. Mayor, members of the council, well, Jeff so kindly helps me out by opening up the PowerPoint. I appreciate that. Tonight, I think it's exciting that this will be the second study session conducted during a city council meeting, to allow the council really to dig into the real meat of an issue and discuss it. I find that quite exciting. As you know, the Building Community Task Force presented their report with their policy recommendations to you on June 12, 2006. I'm sure you would agree with me that they put a lot of work into it, a lot of creativity, came up with some really good items. You have in front of you a copy of that report, and we've inserted the staff comments, inserted there to say paper rather than give you two complete reports. You'll notice many things are being done, some new things are being done. We're excited that staff reports are going to be put on the web. That was a direct recommendation from this task force. Also, the lecture series that they've recommended has begun this fall with great success. We have a author series that's getting about 50 people attending it. We've got a forgiving class, I have the exact title later in the report, that's drawing 25 people, so we're very excited about that. Some of the other things, of course, would require policy decisions by this body in addition to resources. But all the departments appreciate this focus. We've talked about it, and all departments are looking forward to continuing to enhance our efforts in building community, because all the departments throughout the city, that is certainly one of the things that we work hard at. The staff would recommend that, as you did with the SVWMA study session, that you-- The staff would recommend that, as you did with the SVWMA study session, that you take public comment and then give yourself the rest of the time, the rest of the hour, to discuss the item, and I would be happy to answer any questions now or throughout the process.
Thank you.
And I do have a summary of all the policy, that's the summaries, and then there's lots more underneath, and I thought it'd be nice for you to leave that up so you can refer to it and the public can also.
Okay.
And again, I want to thank the task force and the staff who supported them.
Very good. And I do think we should take public comment before we get into discussion. Do we have anybody here that would like to speak on this item? I think I have. Pat, you've got a card here.
There are actually three of us here who were on that task force. Heidi and Jennifer are here as well, if you want to hear from them. I think what we are interested, would like to hear tonight, is your response. We've been waiting for your reaction since June, and so I'd like to hear what jumps out at each of you that, you know, really resonates with each of you. And we would like to have an ad hoc committee of the council to maybe, as a next step, now that we've set our priorities, the staff has responded, to have an opportunity to sit down with two council members and go through this and talk about how it could be implemented and which things could be done in the near future, which might be possible and which are wild fantasies. We realize some of them are in the very long, far distant future. And I did speak to Councilmember David's and Councilmember Lewis before the retreat. Mayor Grokot wasn't there when I talked to them, hadn't gotten there yet, and they each said that they would be willing to be on an ad hoc committee, so I think to keep the momentum going without appointing a formal committee where you interview a bunch of people and swear everybody in and that kind of thing, to sit down with a couple of council members and go through it and further develop it would be helpful to us and to council. We might then be able to come back to the retreat in February with some more concrete ideas about what to do in the next six months, what to do in the next three years, that kind of thing. We would hope, I would hope that we could have something like that ready by February if we get meeting soon. Thank you. And we're all three happy to answer questions about the report, and I'd like to also thank the staff. The Parks and Rec staff was at almost every meeting. We went to emails at the end and just kind of emailed all the report around and around and around, but they really did staff our committee the whole time. Thanks.
Thank you. The other two members, anything you want to add? If you'd go up to the mic.
Hi, I'm Heidi Sprenta, and as one of the co-authors of the report, I just wanted to be here to hear what your response was and to be able to answer any questions that you had. And also, I'd like to emphasize what Pat said, that what we feel is important to sort of continue this whole community building process is to have an ad hoc ongoing committee so that members of the community can stay involved and help out with this whole process. Thanks.
Thank you. You'll pass. Okay, thank you. And before we get started up here and discuss these items with each other, Bob, do you have a cautionary note for us? Just, we can't take any action on anything, we're just, we might put something on a further, future agenda.
That'll be fine.
Is that right?
Correct.
Okay, very good. So I open it up for discussion. What we could do is take this piece by piece under each of the items here, the policies, looking at that, and then item two and three, the designation of a city employee and the reconstituting the quality of life, item four, hold town hall meetings, and five, promote a culture of volunteerism. And then six is to maintain and develop community events, and seven is long-term projects. So why don't we take those one at a time? Item one is policies. Any comments from council members?
And just as comment, as things move forward in the report for me, there's some detail in the last, just in six and seven, that I felt like I'd like to spend more time talking about, perhaps some of the earlier ones.
Okay.
Just as a time management issue.
Sure.
That's just my two cents.
Okay, all right.
Well, and as the group suggested, they like to hear what resonates, and I'm prepared to tell you what resonates me.
Okay. Do you want to take it section at a time, or do you just want to--
No, I think, I don't need to. I was thinking if I could, we could just kind of verbally address where we are on the process.
All right.
That would work.
Okay.
I think that the idea of reconstituting the quality of life committee is a fine idea. I was a part of it when it was developed before. We had a lot of energy, we had a lot of good people doing a lot of great things. Some of it were completed and others sort of ran out, and then we folded up the process and didn't get back to it. And I think we lost something in the process of doing that. There were some staff changes involved that contributed to that, but when we no longer met, you know, the ideas began to fade away and the energy with it. And I think that taking this kind of, taking these suggestions and putting them back into some sort of a committee format is the proper way to go. I don't think it would be too difficult or too expensive to do that. I know we had a lot of staff help, but I'm not too sure we needed a lot of staff help. I think parts of this quality of life committee, number two, as we'll call it, can be handled by the committee themselves. They can take minutes, they can take notes, they don't have to have staff at every meeting. What the committee does need is to have an entree back to council and perhaps a couple of council members if we decide to do that, bringing the information back and make sure it doesn't get parked and get lost. So I think the idea of having some kind of interface with council is also important. Specifically, on the recommended list, we talked about town meetings, and I know that for a while they were very successful as well. I think we ought to get back into a schedule for that, even if two or three come. Things happen over time. Having a meeting scheduled, something that can be calendared, I think is important. The report, I think, suggests that department heads be present. I don't really think you need to do that. I don't think you need a facilitator. I think the council members, or some of the council members should be there. You know, good notes should be taken, but this is not a meeting where we are going to make decisions. It's merely a matter of receiving input from the community and being able to interpret back to the council and to the community what can be done about these things, if anything. So I see it as fairly, as a very important, but fairly low-key process. It doesn't need to demand a lot of support. I think the idea of Channel twenty-seven, I don't understand Channel twenty-seven, so I'll say this out of respect to those who do. The only thing I see on Channel twenty-seven that makes any difference to me is now and then the council meeting. That's the only thing live, I believe. I see the ads flipping through and I don't see anything else. There may be more stuff, I just don't know. I do think, though, that if it's not terribly expensive to put stuff on, I think it's a very, very good tool, and people would get into the habit over time of looking at it, understanding what's there, perhaps a timing when it's going to repeat, like the community calendar can be on there, and that, I think, is a very, very good tool. And that's something that perhaps the committee could work with staff to get done. One thing I didn't understand, and I didn't particularly like, is the idea of having a supergroup or a steering committee, as was suggested, composed of various representatives. I'm not sure what that accomplishes. It's almost, again, another oversight committee of the oversight committees. It's adding another layer that I'm not sure is particularly important. It may seem that way from time to time for the public, where they would seem as though things are happening under the radar, if you will. I think, however, if we're communicating properly and working well with the community, the need for having another group, a supergroup, would dissipate. I think the idea throughout here of promoting more community events is great. I'm always in favor of that, having a special community picnic day, although we do have our hometown days, but maybe it honors the fire department or some other public safety group. There's a lot of reasons to get together and have a picnic, and as far as I can see, the more the better. Also, a couple of suggestions on having a first night as an annual event. I think that's great. I think movies in the park is just another continuing process that we can bring forward through our good park and rec department. The Sheekers series, Barry spoke to that. Any other things that are listed in the report kind of speak for themselves. So I'll stop there, but that's how the report grabbed me.
And Brad?
I'll try to rifle through a few of these myself. I think the most, my first response is that there's so many good ideas in here in general, sort of, you know, how you organize it and get started on stuff, and that's probably one of the best reasons to have the group continue in some way, shape, or form, just so we can keep some organization, some momentum moving forward on some of these things. So let me just sort of quickly work through it, and I'll go through it just in the order of the report a bit. But on the Channel twenty-seven stuff, I do think that we could, I don't know exactly, a lot of the response in the report, staff sort of said, oh, there's some time involved and so forth, so anything we talk about, we sort of have to sort of ultimately say, well, how much time is involved and so forth, so what can we really do? But it does seem like Channel twenty-seven, I don't know about you other channel surfers out there, but for me, I invariably end up going through there, hoping not to see my face, but perhaps somebody else's, and a lot of times we have, you know, our slides that are sort of going through there. It seems like we already put some information out on that, and perhaps it's just, you know, we expand that and do that in some sort of way that's either, A, a little more dependable, so if we're wondering what's going on in town, we can actually go, oh, I'm going to go to twenty-seven between eight and eight-thirty, I know those events go, or, you know, something that's just a little bit more organized about it, so it's reliable. But I think it's great. It's a good, it's in everybody's house and it's right there, and it's consistent, so I think expanding that with some of these ideas are great. The supergroup, whenever I've heard this idea, here's what I think the real strength of a supergroup is, and again, just to sort of, when Tommy first said it's a supergroup, was that some sort of new cartoon? It's not, but what it is, is the idea that's been out there is there's a lot of different service groups, and again, there's, you know, whether it's PTAs, Tamber of Commerce, service clubs, organized sports, environmental groups, whatever. We have a lot of organized groups, you know, Sierra Club's another one, where it does seem if you could, if maybe on an annual basis, we just got them together and see where there's cross-pollination of ideas, there's, these groups do great things for the city, and maybe combining some of that volunteer effort could be a real powerful thing if everybody got out with different agendas and we found one or two or three that had cross purposes. My guess is we'd have one of the most aggressive volunteer groups in Northern California that'd help us get that done. So I'm always impressed with these groups when I go out and talk with them and meet with them and see what they're up to and go, my gosh, you know, they're dedicated, they're getting a lot of stuff going, and it does seem to me that if we saw some combined effort there, that would be a powerful thing. So, you know, I don't know, it's hard in a lot of these things that are a new idea to say, yeah, we should do that, commit to it for the next five years, but what I would do is say, boy, let's try it once and see what it might bear, because I think it could be powerful. I think, I'd like us to talk a little bit more later, perhaps, about designating a city employee at the senior management level to oversee the community relations. I think that's certainly a big staff impact thing, it's potentially a big budget impact thing. It certainly sounds like a good idea, it's just a matter of how does it really work? So I wouldn't mind hearing staff kind of maybe respond to that, or us all talk about that a little bit. I like the town hall meetings idea. Mostly, I like it because I think a lot of the city council discussions and conversations and interaction with public can end up being very formal, and I like the idea of having something less formal, and Tom, I think that's kind of what you were speaking to, which is if we set those up in such a way that there can be a freer flow of ideas or questions or, I think that's a great thing to do. I was particularly attracted to a sentence in here that I think staff response said that in years past, there's been a citizen group that picked the topic, did public outreach, and facilitated the meetings, and I thought that that would help perhaps take away the one weakness of this, that I thought, well, maybe we hold a town hall meeting and nobody shows up. Maybe that's just my own insecurities there. But what would be great is if we knew that we had a town hall meeting that people were actually interested in. You know, there's a subject or two, and we've got, there's a neighborhood group, we're going to hold it maybe in that neighborhood, and everybody is interested in talking to us about something where they're really valuable, because I think they can be, but I think, so I think that's a good idea to organize, and perhaps like that. I thought the idea of a presence at hot harvest nights and hometown days was a no-brainer. We should just have that booth, and it probably could be volunteer staff, and maybe even some of the service groups that we talked about, or some of those other groups could help us do that, but it seems like that's a great place to get everybody walking out. People are kind of excited about San Carlos and those, and let's take some names and maybe we can help generate a list. It might be a low-hanging fruit, as it were. For some reason, I like the idea of movies in the park. Perhaps it's my own professional involvement, and during Week of the Family, the last couple of years when I've shown movies, they seem, they've gone over pretty good, and everybody gets together and they're kind of fun-oriented events. I'm probably also affected by, in New York City this summer, walking by Bryant Park, which is the park behind the New York City Public Library, which used to be one of the most dilapidated areas in New York City, and there is, they're showing old classic films that aren't, I don't believe they're expensive to acquire at all, like I think they're showing The Birds one night there. There had to be ten thousand people on a Friday night in New York City, all just, you know, everybody's got sort of blankets out there, and it just felt great. It was sponsored, I think HBO in that case was sponsoring that, and we may or may not be at that level, but my guess is, that could be one of those things where we could look for a company to sponsor it, put up a nice silver screen, and people love our Friday night music events, and I think there's every reason to believe that something like that would be huge. So I'd love to see that happen. I thought, I don't really understand how they get implemented, but I like the idea of community gardens in San Carlos. You know, just when I think about it and I imagine what that feels like, looks like, I like it. How to implement it, I'm not sure, I've got a bright idea yet, but I bet somebody does. So again, the community picnic firefighter appreciation day, to me, seems like a great thing to do. Community member recognition program, as you all know, nothing feels better than to be recognized for good works that you do, and so it's one of those things that I think we should consider. I think it's great. I believe in the summary notes, this next item was put on, wow, this will take forever, or it's pie in the sky, or it's going to take a really long time, but I think it's really important, and that is the increased public safety and awareness, emergency preparedness. I mean, we live daily, basically, in earthquake country, and I don't think we should ever take that for granted, and in fact, it wouldn't, I don't think it'd surprise anybody in this room if there was an earthquake this week. I mean, we just know that at some point, at some place and time, that's probably going to happen. So from my standpoint, that's a, it's a major issue for the city of San Carlos, and I guess it'd be great to hear some more information on this, because frankly, I don't understand why some of this would take a huge amount of time to pursue and to sort of have in place, and many of these issues seem it's just a matter of organization, put a little energy behind it. So that was something that I just felt a little out of phase with my reaction to, I thought we could get on top of that, and it felt like it was a longer-term issue, so it'd be interesting to hear other points of view on that one. Block parties. Block parties are always fun. I can't remember anybody who didn't have a good time at one, so I think block parties are a great thing to encourage. And then I think the longer-term projects are things that if we can, again, get on a program, to identify capital funding, to get some of these things done, a pool or sports complex, cultural community center, a theater center, I mean, these are things that would be so great for the city, and there's just no vision that-- be so great for the city, and there's just no vision that anybody else can obviously look at and say, "Oh, there's the money for it, let's just put our heads down for three or four years." So, it'll take harder work than that, but the longer we just kind of leave them out there and don't do anything, the longer they won't happen, I know that. So, we can't knock them all off, but it'd be great to start knocking on the door of one or two of them. So, that's my...
Okay, thank you very much. I will attempt to do the same thing and go through here point by point. First thing that I highlighted had to do with a policy change or the creation of new policies should originate within the community in response to changing needs of the community. And I just had a caveat to that. I know what the folks are getting at there, and I think it's often true that policy changes and so forth should come more from the community and from council members, perhaps acting as a filter for the community, as opposed to being driven by staff. But that said, there is a need continually to address policy changes because of outside influence. You know, we have things coming down from the state, from the national level and so forth, that sometimes impact us and require that we take a look at things, mostly from the state, not often from the federal government, but oftentimes the state mandates something, we have to take a look at that and then respond to it. But I agree with that point, that a lot of the things that we do as a city government should be because it's the citizen input that's creating that impetus. Item two, under the summary of policies, to designate a city employee at the senior management level to oversee community relations and serve as liaison with community members and groups. I broke that into two pieces. I see that, the one word that pops out at me is oversee community relations, and that's a management issue. The serve as liaison with community members and groups is the actual doing. And even later in, that was brought up again, item two is a bullet point here to designate a city employee and so forth. And I read through that, and I thought, after, you know, I'm almost done with a year of being mayor, that's what the mayor's supposed to do. And if the mayor can't do it, or if there's areas that the mayor doesn't feel adequate, then the mayor goes and talks to the city manager, and if the city manager wants to give that to a department head, he does. But I see that as a role, maybe we need to emphasize that when someone takes over as mayor. That's part of your job. You're supposed to go to chamber events, and Girl Scout events, and Boy Scout events, and you name it, and show, and as much as you can, when you're the mayor, you should go to Art in the Park, and all the concerts in the park, and show up at ballgames once in a while, and get around. That's your job as the mayor, and especially if you get asked to go to something, you darn well should go, and if you can't, then you assign the vice mayor, and if he can't go, he gets somebody else to do it. So, I don't see that necessarily as being something that needs to be done by a staff member. Now, as far as managing that, I think we already have the staff to do it, and I think that the two places that falls, again, is with the city manager and actually over here with the city clerk. Her office is open, you know, 8:00 to 5:00, and if people want to communicate something to the city, they can walk into the city clerk's office and communicate it, and she will then dispense that information to the council members if it's pertinent and necessary that she do so, usually it is. But we have that in place, we just don't maybe advertise it enough, but it's there. And furthermore, if there's an issue that needs to be addressed, and then it goes to the city manager, and if it's something that he feels then needs to go to a department head, he will send it down the chain to the department head. And usually, in that process, he will also notify the council that thus and so is going on. So, we have a mechanism in place, I think. Perhaps we're not public enough with it, or, you know, implemented enough, I don't know, but I can certainly say, as my term as mayor, I've tried in that one area to be out there and be seen and communicate with people as much as possible. So, the, let's see. There's an item here that talks about that we believe it's extremely important for all our elected and appointed members of city government to deal with each other, and all the members of our community, as well as those of our neighboring communities, in a professional, courteous, and respectful manner. And I put in the margins here that I think we've dealt with that to some degree when we wrote our ethics and code of conduct for the city council, and we talked about that during that process, about how we treat each other up here on the council. We've certainly this year tried to implement a policy of addressing one another in more formal fashion, as opposed to first name, because that was getting too loose. And there's times, I know, even this evening, I've said Tom or Brad, but mostly I try to address the vice mayor as the vice mayor and a council member by that title, and so we've got that going on. I do think we've had some issues in the past with how we address other cities and how we talk about other cities, and we've made some changes there as well. So, I think that these are good points that are in the report, and I think we've started to address those. As far as staff is concerned, and how they deal with us, or deal with the public, or deal with other, you know, staff members on other, with other cities, we did a mission statement when we had a retreat, and in the mission statement, it's, that is partly addressed, because it talks about being friendly and treating people in a professional manner and so forth. So, that is there, and so I think that's something that we've, it's good that it was pointed out in the report, and I think it's something that we have addressed. I think with most things, though, every once in a while, you need a reminder, and there's nothing wrong with that. So, I did, I took note to something here, in fact, I'll ask a question about this, because I put a question mark next to it. Under staff reports, make reports more accessible to the public and then easier to understand, and I'm not sure there's much we can do to make these easier to understand. Sometimes the material we deal with is pretty complex, it's hard for us to understand it, let alone make it understood to the public. But Pat, do you want to go to the mic and...
What page are you on, Mr. Mayor?
Okay, I'm on page two, under policies...
Gotcha.
Yeah.
I don't know how you're going to make them easier to understand either, but more accessible, having them on the website's going to be great. I'll give you an example of accessibility, though. Before the retreat, I wanted a copy of the packet, and I went to Christine's office, Christine was on vacation, and I got a very cool reception to that request, and was told that I could stand there and read it. Well, it was this thick, and there was no way I could stand there and read it. And it hadn't been put out to the public, and the response to the Natural Resources Committee report hadn't been sent to Natural Resources, and it was very thick, and the city wanted 25 cents a page, even though the website says .25 cents per page, which is four pages for a penny, 400 for a dollar. That's not true. When you get down there and point that out to them, they say, "No, we can't give it to you for that price, it's 25 cents a page." Well, that's more than Kinko's charges. You're making a profit on providing public information to the public, and that's another issue, but I think that's a wrong way to make money. So, it isn't always easy to get public information, and it should be easy to get public information. And I think having the, and I've been asking now for, I don't know, a year for the packet to be sent out the way SBWMA does. When that agenda goes out, the whole packet goes out via e-notify, and evidently, the city doesn't have whatever software it takes to do that. But it's been frustrating for me since I got involved in keeping track of what you guys are doing, to try to see what you're seeing. And you sit up here and say, "Well, I'm on page three, item six, and I think this or that or the other thing," and I haven't ever seen page three, so I don't know what you're talking about. So, I think having the packet on the website's going to be a really good first step, and I don't know what you're going to do about making it easy to read.
Okay, thank you. So, we are working on that effectability...
And I can respond to that, Mr. Mayor. We're about a month away from an upgrade in our records management software, which will allow that. We just don't have a, one little piece to link the packets and the staff reports to the web, and the method that Ms. Bell is describing for other agencies, it's a labor-intensive method, and we were hoping to avoid that. So, with this upgrade in about a month, we should be able to, with one, literally one touch of a click, the entire packet will be on the web.
Fantastic.
It'll be really nice.
I would suggest something long-term is to answer Ms. Bell's concern during meetings, if there, once we are electronic, if we had something over there that was electronic that folks could follow along, what we're reading, so it could be over there, and when we say we're on page two, like I just did, you know, click, there it goes. That would be great. I don't think we're there yet.
All we need is money, we could do whatever you want.
Okay, we'll work on that, too. Okay, now I'm on page three, and it talks about providing ongoing sensitivity customer service training to all city employees, and I'm going to chime in on this. I think especially as we look at, the area I think this is extremely important is when we get into economic development strategies, if we're going to be asking companies to come to this city and do business here, they're going to need friendly service primarily in Liz's department, quite frankly, not that you don't get it now, and the building department, because those are the two places you usually go when you're thinking about bringing your company to town, and it needs to be certain that they get friendly customer service in those two departments, and perhaps public works as well, because that might be a place you need to go. But I think overall, this is a good goal, and I'm not sure we have the, it was mentioned somewhere, oh, I know, I was reading something from the Chamber of Commerce suggesting we might want to do it in-house with our human resources department, and I'm just not sure we have the capability within our human resources department. That's not generally what city human resources department deal with, you know, those kinds of things, but I don't know, maybe we can do it in-house. But I do think it's something that we need to be sensitive to, and again, I personally, I think it's one of those things that you need to be reminded of every once in a while. I know even on a personal level, I've got friends who say things to me and, you know, remind me to smile and be a nice guy and so forth, and so I don't think it's a bad thing to have one, you know, some kind of regularly scheduled training going on there. The upgrade, the community bulletin board kiosk, again, this would be, I think the one downtown is important, people do look at it, long-term. I would see something that, again, would be tied in electronically, as opposed to having to go over there and stick up paper, and I think that would be a long-term goal. I don't know how much that would cost, but I see Barry making notes, and I'm sure there's something out there in the market that we could come up with. I've already talked about designating a city employee to oversee community relations, so I won't go over that again. Hold Town Hall Meetings, I talked about this, what, seven, eight years ago, and then dropped the issue, and in fact, I would like to ask Bob, because when I, I remember talking to the previous administration, Mr. Garvey's administration, about this, and was cautioned against it because of Brown Act violations. If we have a whole council and there's not something actually agendized, how do we deal with that?
You're allowed to attend meetings of other public bodies. You're allowed to go to social functions without noticing your own meeting. Take, for example, I mean, a meeting of a school board. You could all attend a meeting of the school board so long as you don't all sit together and talk about city business amongst yourselves. At the same time, you can attend, though, you could even speak at the meeting.
So, relating to a Town Hall Meeting, if it was put on by some kind of citizens group that, you know, we could attend, we could listen, hear all the topics, maybe even make some comments, but...
You could.
Yeah, okay, all right. So, there's a possibility there. And I would, I agree with Tom and with Councilmember Lewis, that's definitely something we should be looking at. The frequency, I'm not sure about quarterly, but how often, that's something I think can be discussed, but I do think it would be a useful event on occasion. As far as promoting a culture of volunteerism among community members, I'm going to agree with Cheryl Pomerank, who sent a letter on this whole report, and she feels like we are pretty strong as community volunteer-wise, and I would tend to agree. We have a lot of things going on, from hometown days to, I don't know, help me out here, there's a lot of things, I just know there are. Chickens Ball, that's one I was getting mixed up in my, couldn't get out of my mouth here, but Chickens Ball and the group that Brad is going to be a liaison to with the Ed Foundation, there's just a lot of, lot of events that we do. And so, I think we're pretty strong volunteer-wise. We've got, in terms of volunteerism, all our Kiwanis, our Lions, Rotary, all have strong membership. Now, as far as the idea, I think Brad mentioned, is about getting them all together on occasion to see where they're overlapping and could work together and so forth, is not a bad idea. I'm not sure that's something that needs to be done by the city, though. It might be something that the chamber looks into, or the community group, or the service clubs themselves want to put on some kind of fair like that or forum. Not all these things have to be done by the city of San Carlos. Establishing movies in the park, I think, would be a good flip side to concerts in the park. Those are well-attended, and in fact, perhaps something that would be a wintertime event, since we do concerts in the park and it's a summer event, we might want to look at movies being an indoor event at the youth center, or the senior center, or something in that regard. And the Speaker Series, I'm glad you did get that started. There is also, Barry, that's been ongoing, I know Jim Dunbar or somebody used to speak at the senior center and, or community adult center now, and, correct me if I'm wrong, a lot of the events that they have there, even the lunches and so forth, those are open to the public or not?
Well, thank you for the plug for the Jim Dunbar series. Yeah, any activity at the adult community center that, during the regular business day, is open to adults 50 and over.
Okay.
And then we do have activities at nights and weekends for all ages, rentals and classes and that kind of thing. And then, as you mentioned, lots of other lectures, including, I'll put in a plug, I went, we put one on for History of Rock and Roll with Joel Sullivan from the Chronicle. For all us aging baby boomers, aging hippies, it was great.
Okay, thank you. The item on here about establishing a dining out in San Carlos event, again, I think it's a great idea, and again, I think it's something that we could talk to the chamber about and let them take the run on that, as opposed to having city staff deal with it. The idea about having things for art and, it's a long-term project, but a cultural center and a community theater, something I love that Santa Rosa has, is you go up to Santa Rosa, they have a building that is, I'm trying to remember the name of it, there's a bike ride that always starts there every year that I go to, and it has a half a dozen meeting rooms, it's got a big assembly hall, you can do theater there, they have, they use the walls in the lobby for museum pieces and so forth. They just get a lot of use out of that building, and I think they actually use it for, the money, the city gets income from it, because they rent it out for certain events, and then they also hold events where they charge admission, and so it's an income stream for them. And I just can't remember, I'd like to give you, Barry, I'll give you the name of this later, Luther Burbank Center, that's the name of it, Luther Burbank Center. And I do think we're a community, like I said earlier, with the Chickens Ball and Children's Theater, and neither one of these has a venue, a proper venue, to hold these events, and I think, long-term, that's something that this community is interested in, would appreciate, and we should look towards having something like that in this city. And I also think we could tie that into part of our economic development plan, similar to this, what's the city that's just north of the Oregon border, California-Oregon border? Ashland, yes, exactly. You know, they leverage that kind of thing with the... You know, they leverage that kind of thing with the Shakespeare Outdoor Theater with their economic development and tourism and so forth. And I think we could do the same thing here. I think it was a big loss for this city, I understand why it happened, but when we lost the Circle Star Theater to other kinds of development, I think that was a huge loss. Now, that was used differently, it was a private, private deal, but not, not a public resource necessarily, but I think we could use that in this city. And then lastly, the item that Brad highlighted, the increased public safety awareness, emergency preparedness, I think that's something that we could agendize pretty readily for future meetings, say in January or February. I know that sounds like a way off, but I just know what our agendas look like up until that point. But we could put that on the council agenda for discussion and have it be a project that Chief Frye and Chief Rothaus work on, and it would segue very nicely into something we talked about at the council retreat, which is those two departments working together and doing projects together. So those are, those are my comments.
To follow up on that point, can staff, I think in the staff response, I believe it says difficult implement, difficult implementation, high cost and high impact. And two items under that were assemble a voluntary register of community members trained in CPR, disaster relief, medical professions, and update annually. That was one issue. And the second one was develop and maintain a registry of elderly and disabled residents who may need extra help during emergencies. Neither of those two, to me, seem to be particularly difficult, I mean, in other words, in money or scope or whatever to knock off. I was just curious, was that a, was that a staff categorization of that? And I'm sort of curious, maybe there's something I'm just not seeing there. And I'm on the summary document.
Page 10.
What page are you on?
I'm in the, so it's after page 11.
Page 10?
After the conclusion?
Page 10, possibly?
Yeah, I think he's on page 10.
Mine doesn't have the page number on it. It's not that I can't determine page.
It's page 10.
Page 10?
Yes.
Yeah, just as Barry's looking at that, one comment I would make is, at one point a couple of years ago, we did have a full-time position that was co-staffed and co-funded by police and fire to do these sorts of things. And I think they're kind of looking at them as that group, you'd probably want to reestablish that position. It was a police service technician, if I remember correctly.
Yeah, and I guess those two items in particular, I wasn't sure connotated a full-time position or anything like that, it just seemed like information that we needed to gather and perhaps have as an emergency preparedness document.
The two, the one was the registry of elderly and disabled residents, and what was the other one?
The other one was assemble a voluntary register of community members trained in CPR, disaster relief, medical professions, and update it annually.
Thank you.
And I believe it, that in the stuff that we received, after page 11, there is a sort of a summary of policy and action items organized into three, or, excuse me, six areas. And this was the final area, and it's a difficult implementation, high cost and high impact. So that's why I asked.
Yeah, I think in terms of keeping the registry and keeping it current, it's an ongoing activity. But I will say that the police chief and I were talking this morning about a program that he's investigating with respect to a very public concerted effort by, by police and fire to remind people that for the first 72 hours, that they're responsible for having the materials to care for themselves, because that is the nature of, of the emergency planning effort. He is looking into a rather concerted program to, to a public information campaign and program, if you will. The degree to which he goes into this kind of activity, I'd have to refer to him and see how extensive their efforts are to reach out into various pockets of the community for dissemination of public information. But that is something that I think we can provide more information to you in the very near future on.
Yeah, it seems like perhaps there's different ways we could look at getting after something like this. One is where the police department takes on the responsibility of maintaining that list and contacting everybody, and that, another way to get at it perhaps as well is to get neighborhood representatives, perhaps it's through homeowners associations or some other way, where they, they take, there's a volunteer and they keep an updated list, so if something happens, they can start their own local, looking after their neighborhood, you know, network or something like that. Maybe we can help assist, set those up in different areas of the neighborhood.
At our council booth, we could have something there that people could, you know.
Perhaps, or, anyway, just.
There's ways.
Yeah, it seems like something we need to do, and I know that in my neighborhood, if there was a big disaster, my first thing would be, not necessarily wait for, for the police to come, but also in a way where I could sort of say, boy, I know, you know, six houses down there, we better go check on, on these folks, and two houses down there, we better check, and start dividing and conquering and checking on neighbors.
Ms. Bell?
At a meeting, almost a year ago now, county meeting on this subject, on preparedness for people with elderly and people with disabilities, the city of Pacifica was in the process of setting up a registry. I don't know that they finished it, but they were pretty far along. And so that would be a place to look to see how they did it, you know, there are.
A model that exists possibly.
Issues of confidentiality, I mean, there's a whole lot of stuff to worry about once you get into this. But if they, if they finished it up last year, they should have some experience with the cost of updating it and how tedious and, and they, you know, they've done some of the troubleshooting already, so that'd be a place to look. And the other thing that we talked about at the meetings is to have a middle group. The CERT-trained people are the real, really highly-trained people, but then a group of people who maybe knows first aid, or the woman down the street's a nurse, and the guy in the next block is a cop, and, you know, to know who those people are and where they are. And they may not be CERT-trained, they may not be on the list of 75 people the city's going to depend on, but they can be very valuable. We have a police officer in our neighborhood who was injured on the job and probably will never go back to work as a police officer, but he still knows how to do it, you know, and he still has valuable skills. So it would be good to know, I agree with Councilmember Lewis, I almost said Brad, that it would be good to know who those people are in your own area, and maybe what the city needs to do is get that process going, you know, seed those groups and, and help us get started in each neighborhood.
Change the topic for.
No, let's, let's hold on to this just one more minute.
Yes.
Earlier tonight, we, we acknowledged a goal given to us by the Seminole County Grand Jury whereby we would have 5% of our households CERT-qualified. That's 550 qualified people. That's a big number.
It is.
And this kind of program is currently in place in Menlo Park where I work. It is basically, it's a commitment, it's five sessions, two or three hours in evening. I think they run it consecutive weeks typically. And there's a person in Menlo who is assigned the task of keeping them going and reaching their goal. I think we'll, in order to do it, we're going to have to dedicate a dollar, some dollars or, or staff time to it. But it's very well-received by those who go through it, and those who do go through it are a valued asset to the community should a disaster come. So this is something we need to keep our eye on and really begin to push forward and try to help the chief reach that goal.
So it sounds like we do need to agendize this whole bullet item about increased public safety and awareness, emergency preparedness. And Mark, do you think January, February, we could?
Yes. Just a comment, looking at our letter to the grand jury that we're going to send out tomorrow, that you've approved, one of the recommendations from the grand jury is not only the 550, which the police chief thinks we can do despite the time and the cost, but also that the city council would be CERT-trained as well.
Oh, wait a minute.
We, we decided to hold off and not commit you to that, because it, it does involve five sessions, and it takes a lot of time. But that was another recommendation.
Well, we got one council member probably certified already.
Well, almost, but by the time you get through that exam, you'll feel you're CERT-qualified, even though you're not.
Okay. Mr. City Manager, can we?
I, I think we can give you a report on what the program that is already underway, what, what the status of it is. Like I say, the police chief and the, the fire chief, it is representative of the public safety goal within our strategic plan. And there have been some meetings held, the, the chief has talked with me specifically about an educational program that he's got in mind, to the degree that it dovetails in with, with this other commitment, we can certainly prepare a report and bring the council up to speed as to the efforts that are already underway on, on that front.
And might there be then some things that we could take action on as well at that time?
Possibly, I'm not sure that there will be a need for it. I mean, I think it's, it's already part of the, the chief's program, in terms of what he's, what he's proposing to do. But if there are dollars that are required to further implement the program, we can bring it forward at that time. I simply, you know, at this juncture, I can't tell you, but, but certainly within the next couple of months, we could bring that to your attention.
Now, there are some other things in here besides, under this item, increased public safety and awareness and so forth, that deal with things other than the CERT program. So what I'm saying is taking this whole block and putting it on an agenda so that we can discuss it and give direction. Is that what the council would like?
Well, that's what it takes. I think we just need to move the program along. And I'd be glad to give it more time up here if, if that will help the process.
I think, I'm not sure exactly how I agendize it, but there are, there's five bullet points here, so perhaps the idea is to sort of respond to what's it take on some of these, where is Chief Rojas, you know, where is he making progress in some of these, and what are other things that we may want to respond to, or, or find it from staff what we think is entailed in pursuing them.
And that's, I think that's what you said earlier.
Certainly give you another report specific to the public safety goals within this, if you'd like, we can have another study session on just that, that aspect of the report, if you'd like. What, I mean, there's a number of things that the council has talked about tonight with respect to this report and following up. And many of the things, Barry and I were talking earlier today, for example, about the desire, the, the movies in the park is something that has been considered previously by the, the Parks and Recreation Department, and something that they'd like to bring forward. It's a matter of resources and priorities in terms of how that program might fit in with some other programs that they're currently providing. Community gardens would be a similar, similar kind of thing. I mean, all of the things that we're talking about tonight, what, what's great for us is it gives us an idea of what the city council would like to have us really visit with respect to programs for consideration in the near future. And in our normal planning, what we would do is we would take that kind of input now and, and start to put together budget programs for consideration within the next funding cycle for the city council, whether that be block parties or community gardens or movies in the park, vis a vis the other programs that we already offer. To some degree, resources are required, but it may be a trade-off from one program for another. And, and what we would propose to do is to bring all of that forward to you within the next budget cycle for your consideration, after we have, I think, a good sense as to the kinds of priorities that are of importance to you. As I indicated on the public safety front, what I'd like to do is, is, is have a report prepared by the, the police chief after he's had a chance to, to communicate with the fire chief and the Belmont police chief. I mean, one of, one of the goals within the strategic plan is for there to be a cooperative effort and some communication between our, those three officials to determine how a cooperative effort within the, both of those communities might be brought forward in a, in a cooperative and productive way. So we would report back to you then, and I could certainly ask him to touch upon the, the other aspects of the program outlined within this report.
That's great.
Okay, very good.
I do.
May I now bring up the point I forgot to bring up?
Sure.
Okay. And I just wanted to add comment to the Channel 27, I know Vice Mayor Davids and Councilmember Lewis both mentioned that. I think it would be important for Channel 27 to have a little more regularity to it. The council meetings have that, and people figure out when they are. But as far as, okay, if there's going to be announcements on park and rec programs, if I know it's always at noon every day or on certain days, then I know I can tune in at that time and, and catch those things. And so I think there needs to be more regularity. And I also think it would be, it, I don't know how much staff time it would take, but to have something like you have when you stay at a, a resort or a hotel, and, and you can go to that channel in the morning, and it'll tell you, this is what's going on at this resort today. And that's on there a lot of times for, if you ever stayed at a resort, you know, for like half an hour in the morning, and it just stays there. And you can turn on the TV, and you know that, you can send your kids over here to the pool party, and you can be over here for the lunch thing, and there's tennis at this time and so forth. We don't always have that much activity going on in the city, but if there were a way to have something on that TV channel, especially, you know, at a certain designated time in the morning, you know, your city today in San Carlos, and this is what's going on. These are the, there's a planning commission to meet, meeting tonight at such and such a time, that this is happening and that's happening, and the Lions Club's meeting at, you know, VIX at noon and so forth. I think that would be really, really beneficial to our whole community and get to the spirit of what this, this group's talking about, which is, let's, let's have the community, community know what's, what's happening in the community. And it builds, that was Barry's motto is with his department, builds community. That's it.
Would it be great to have a menu on that? You go to the menu and push, you want to see the.
It would.
Accountant meeting, or you want to check the CERT program, or you want to get the calendar? Wonder if we could do that? Christine, can we do that?
We have a community calendar. We have a community calendar online already. It's not on television, but we do have a calendar. Today at the youth center, they serve mini burgers, in case you didn't know. There's bingo that we're missing tonight, and needlework class, so there's a lot of that already, but it may not be prominent on the website, but certainly, I don't know if we could tie it into television, but I see the administrative services director in the back taking notes, so.
Okay, very good.
Let me just thank the council for your thoughtful response. It's very encouraging to hear from you what you think of, of our report, and that you are so enthusiastic about a lot of these things. I think we can, if we can get an ad hoc committee, I'll put in another plug for the ad hoc committee of the council to meet with us, I think we can get some of these things rolling and, get some community energy going into it that will save staff time. Thanks again.
I have a, not for you, I've got a question for Councilmember here. Regarding ad hoc, a little discussion here, do we, do we feel we need an ad hoc, or do we think if, you know, Tommy, you were pressing to get a quality of life committee going again. And in fact, I wanted to ask you if you could just highlight some of the things that came out of the quality of life committee, what made it so valuable? And then if we could discuss the question I brought up.
I think, I think what, what really worked with the quality of life is that there were specific areas determined ahead of time, pretty much as the committee has done here. And there was a recycling group, there's a community garden group, there was a pool group, there was, there were a couple of others. But they were, pardon?
High school.
High, high school, yeah, that was a big issue then. But these people then gathered, those who were specifically interested in that area, and they met as smaller committees of the whole and reported back to the whole. And, and I just thought there was very high value in, in what was done and the, and the recommendations made. I don't say we need to return to that format, I think an ad hoc committee is fine. My concern is that we need to bring these issues forward, I think, and if, if it would help having a council member involved, I'd be glad to be a part of that. But I think we need to make sure this thing now takes the next step. We just don't adjourn it and, and leave it alone. So that's, that's my encouragement, that we, we move forward with it.
So we would need to agendize a consideration of an ad hoc committee?
Yeah, a recommendation, a recommendation for council members to serve with the committee, and then take the next step.
Okay.
We can decide as a part of that group where we go next and make recommendations ongoing.
All righty. And I think we have, that wouldn't take a, a great deal of time at a council meeting, I don't think, so we probably agendize that fairly soon, next couple council meetings.
And the only thing that, when we do that is obviously we have a lot of commissions and committees and so forth that, that we've got going, so staff, it always takes some staff time to help support that. And obviously, I think that this is important, but when we say ad hoc, we may want to take a look at. we say ad hoc, we may want to take a look at what, at that time, staff, what do you feel like you can support, and perhaps there's times of days that are better than others, and then maybe we can try to do something that can work for both, because we do ask a lot of staff in extra hours, and that's, it's a burden, but I think on an ad hoc basis it's good, there's good stuff there.
Well, a little discussion on that, actually, because Tom was saying before, with the quality of life, it didn't really take much staff support.
We had one staff member, Leslie Loomis, was here at the time, and I don't know how much time it took out of her job, she was running personnel or human resources as well, but she was deeply involved in it, and I think she attended most of the meetings, which I don't think really is necessary. Obviously, we need Barry's input, or staff input on what this committee has in mind. However, having a council member involved with them already puts a filter in terms of what comes back on a reasonable basis with a timeframe that would seem to work. And so, I'm not sure we need a lot of staff time, I'm not sure we need staff there at all times.
Well, perhaps the, being that there would be a couple of council members on this, the committee could meet, the ad hoc committee could meet with some members of this committee, is how I'm seeing it, right?
Right.
And then, after the meeting, simply check in, you know, set up a meeting with Barry in his office and talk things out. Okay. All righty, well, we'll put that on the agenda.
My hope would be to minimize staff time in all these issues.
I agree, yes, I agree. Okay. All right. I think that then brings us to, where on our agenda? Item 10A, which is consideration of amending the San Carlos Municipal Code, section 10.32. I believe Liz Collin, our planning director, is that right?
No.
No? Our city attorney?
Yes, right.
Okay, very good.
City attorneys just love to be traffic engineers. But, I'll submit on the staff report, as you can see from the staff report, the reason for taking off the limitation on parking is to allow Trader Joe employees a place to park so that they're not parking in the neighborhoods. It's been tried as a, on a temporary basis, and it appears to be working, so we're going to institutionalize it by changing the city code. Be glad to answer any questions.
So, is Belmont to Central one block in front of Trader Joe's and Walgreens?
Correct. It's going to run from Belmont to...
I lost track of where the streets are.
Belmont to Cent, Belmont, Belmont's one corner of where Walgreens is, and it's going to go south to Central, where?
Where the parking places.
The Olson Nolte saddle is.
Yeah, so it's one block.
It's more than one block. It's actually two.
Okay.
Belmont to White Oak, White Oak to Central.
Another question I have, what does that do to the merchants along?
Well, they had...
That second block? The people are parked there all day.
Well, since second block has a parking lot in and of itself with respect to the motel that's there, there's nothing on the one corner, and there's just Olson Nolte on the far corner. So, I suppose if it becomes a problem, we'll hear from that one merchant that might be affected.
You can't...
And that assumes that employees are going to park it that far down El Camino anyway.
Yeah. I can't picture the business along that second block south. I know there's a vacant lot, and there's a little print shop.
Vacant lot used to be a restaurant and any number of restaurants, and then it became dilapidated and then finally got torn down.
Then there's the little print shop, and then there's a motel.
There's a motel and everything else. So, Olson Nolte's way on the far corner, and they have parking in and around that corner.
Right.
Doesn't appear to be a problem.
And then during this trial, the employees have been encouraged to use that strip.
That's correct.
And it's proven to be successful?
As far as, apparently, the feedback to Public Works and Engineering has been that the neighbors are, see a lessening of traffic parking in the neighborhood, just to the west of Trader Joe's, so it appears to be working.
The one, I have a question, Brad, do you have any questions? The only question I have is, I see that it's working for employees, and that sounds good, however, what happens, how do we go about enforcing, you know, if somebody decides to park a motorhome there for an undue amount of time, or an abandoned vehicle, or, you know, if there's something that comes along that we don't want, and there's no time limit, how do we enforce it?
I think we're going to wind up going to some form of permit or employee parking, if it comes to that. If it has been successful for employees, we have any number of other ways to do it.
Okay.
Because along those lines, there's the for sale signs on the cars that sometimes go.
I know, if we want, well, we already have our for sale parking lot on the east side of El Camino going towards the railroad station, and if this becomes a problem, if it doesn't accomplish the purpose, then we'll just change it.
Okay, so if it presents a new problem, we attack that new problem?
Yes.
Now, you currently don't allow overnight parking on the east side, or at least to that developed area, so there could be something like that here, which would keep people rotating at least on a 24-hour basis.
And that said, even with time limits, it's still hard to, especially these motorhomes that pop up every once in a while, they're hard to deal with. Okay, thank you. Does Ms. Mitchell want to talk to the council?
Good evening, Sally Mitchell. I had also hoped to make it past nine days as president of the Chamber of Commerce before having to make a comment in a city council meeting, but I guess it's not to be. I just inquired of Mr. Lanzon as to whether the businesses on El Camino on the block where Olson Nolte are have been informed of this change, because it occurs to me that specifically, well, I can't say, it seems to me that the one business faces El Camino exclusively, and if that parking were removed for that business, I think it would be a real problem, and for Olson Nolte, who probably has more customers at any one time than the other business, to restrict that, their parking only to Central, where there are several driveway aprons that interfere with parking on that one short little block, I can see where it could be a problem for them. So, if the businesses were not notified that this change might take place, I would ask that you continue it two weeks, so that the chamber and/or the city can talk to the businesses and see whether they have a problem with it. Thanks.
Mr. Mayor, I was just, I think that's a good idea, and I, if you were to introduce the ordinance, it takes introduction and adoption. If you're to introduce, we will make sure that there is follow-up to see if there is a problem or a perceived problem with the businesses, and bring that back to you before you adopt it at the next meeting.
So, procedurally, what we could do is go ahead tonight, and then the city will make a concerted effort to notify those businesses that this is on our, it would show up on our consent calendar, but that it would be there, and if they wanted to come and make comment, then we could react to that at that time.
And we'll make sure you get some form of written report on this particular, on the issue.
But there would be a concerted effort to contact these businesses.
Right.
And in the interim, if we found that one or two businesses felt like it would impact them, we could come back at the adoption of the ordinance with a mitigation measure.
We can modify the ordinance and say, between White Oak and Central, it'll only be the first 200 feet.
Okay. I think procedurally, we can do that, that addresses both moving this along tonight, but also what Ms. Mitchell brought forward, which I think is good.
And I should indicate through the chair that this has been in operation on a trial basis now for several weeks, and we've not, to my knowledge, received any negative feedback to the proposed program, but like Bob said, we can certainly double-check on that.
And of course, in contacting the businesses, we'd let them know that as well. Right, okay, all righty. What's council's pleasure, then?
Remove adoption of ordinance number?
Introduction of 1379.
An ordinance of the city of San Carlos, amend municipal code, chapter 10.32, modification of parking regulations. I'll second.
Okay, we've had a motion by Vice Mayor Davids to introduce the ordinance, and a second by Councilmember Lewis, roll call.
Councilmember Davis?
Yes.
Councilmember Lewis?
Yes.
Mayor Grocott?
Yes. Okay, and that then brings us to a consent calendar item that I had pulled, which is item 8D.
Good evening again, Mayor Grocott. Excuse me. Item 8D is a resolution authorizing amendment to salary and benefit resolution for the Teamsters MOU. This MOU was approved by city council in 2004. It stipulated that on November 1st, or, excuse me, after August of 2006, that the city would do an equity survey, as we had done previously for the management, mid-management, confidential groups back during the summer. The results of those, of that equity survey were reported to council in closed session, as well as communicated to the Teamsters employee group, and have resulted, the survey itself resulted in several positions, most of which the 14 public works and parks maintenance workers the city has to receive, based on the survey, equity adjustments that had previously been communicated to staff by council. I don't know what more you'd like me to report on there.
That's pretty complete, thank you. I just had one clarification, and I know the answer to it, but I'm just asking it for the sake of folks at home and watching this. When we authorize these, these are salary adjustments, and these are maximum, in other words, we do not have to... We're looking at categories, and we're stating what the maximum is for that category, it's not necessarily that that person in the stated position would receive that salary.
That's correct. The salaries listed in the schedule are the maximum they could be, and typically, there are five steps ranging up to that maximum.
And then, and so, what that would then imply is the, it's about $20,000, the impact to the, to our budget, and that would also be a maximum amount, not necessarily the amount.
Correct. It would be a not-to-exceed amount in this current fiscal year, and in fact, even less than that, because it doesn't cover the entire fiscal year.
Right, okay, thank you very much. All righty, any other questions or comments? No, all right. And we need to, this is just reporting back to us, we didn't need to take an action on this, right?
You do need to take action.
We need to take an action to implement it, okay, very well.
I will make a motion that the city council approve the attached resolution amending the salary and benefit schedules for the Teamsters group to be effective November 1, 2006.
Second.
Okay, the resolution was, a motion was made to pass the resolution by Vice Mayor Davids and seconded by Councilmember Lewis, roll call.
Councilmember Davis?
Yes.
Councilmember Lewis?
Yes.
Mayor Grocott?
Yes. And I believe that is the last item on the agenda, so we are adjourned.
You're reconvening in closed session?
Yes, we are, I'm sorry, we are reconvening in closed session. So, we'll adjourn later. Right, okay, thank you.